The Lenox Township Board of Trustees Monday, February 6th at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Fly of the United States of America, Considered Power of Justice and Justice for all. Approval meeting agenda.
I am aware there are no changes to the agenda, so I will make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented. Second.
I have motion by Court Candell, second by Treasurer Hahn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval minutes.
I make a motion to be approved, the minutes of the meeting at 1:323 and 1:1923 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public announcements. Public commentary. Alright, public hearing, community development block grant funds. The motion to open the public hearing will be entertained.
Make a motion to open the CDVG public hearing at 6:31. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hahn. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Alright, case summary. Do you know this is supposed to be read?
Am I supposed to read the public hearing announcement? That's for a hearing.
Okay.
I'll read it. I got it. Hold on. Public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Lenox Township Board of Trustees will conduct a public hearing on Monday, February 6th, 2023, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Lenox Township Municipal Offices, 63775 Gresham Avenue, Lenox, Michigan, 48050, on the proposed use of the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Funds as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Lenox Township will be receiving approximately $1,400 in community development block grant funds which will be available for funding public services. Federal guidelines require that maximum priority be given to activities which primarily benefit low and moderate income families or which aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight. A variety of projects are eligible for community development funding including property acquisition, handicap area removal, public works and facilities, code enforcement, building clearance/rehab, historic preservation, public services, planning and administration, housing rehabilitation. Citizens residing in blighted areas or persons of low and moderate income are encouraged to participate. If unable to be present at this meeting and want your opinion known, please contact the Lenox Township clerk. The Lenox Township meeting room is handicapped accessible. Persons needing special assistance or age should contact the clerk 24 hours prior to the meeting. Published January 11, 2023.
Alright, is there anyone from any organization regarding care funds? Sorry, CDVG funds?
Good afternoon.
Sure. Oh, you can just go. I'll just pass this right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dory Vasquez Nolan. I'm the Executive Director of CareHouse, the McComb County Child Advocacy Center. Our main office is located in the city of McComb, and we also now have a satellite office located in the city of Warren. Our services are geared towards child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, and children that may have been a witness to a violent act, as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to minimize the trauma that is typically associated with child abuse investigations and then help the family on the road beautifully. We are an accredited member of the National Children's Alliance, and we're one of over 900 children's advocacy centers in the US. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in McComb County, as well as Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, Homeland Security, and the FBI, and those federal agencies work with us on cases of things like child pornography, human trafficking, and technology facilitated crimes involving children. We also work closely with the Children's Protective Services, the McComb County Prosecutor's Office, and mental and medical health professionals. CareHouse offers intervention and support services to promote healing and to help families cope not only with the emotional stress that's caused by the abuse, but also with the stress and uncertainty that comes along with a child abuse investigation. Our services include the coordination of forensic interviews, trauma-focused therapy sessions, support groups, child safety assessments, parent-child support groups, I think I didn't say that, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, assistance with transportation, to therapy appointments at our office, translation services as needed, referrals to other community services, and we're the designated counsel in McComb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund. So we also offer child abuse prevention, training and education to professionals who work with children and to the community at large. Families are never charged for any of the services that they receive at CareHouse, and we do serve families for as long as they need us. Sometimes families come back years after a forensic interview if something maybe triggers the child and their adolescence and they need supporting it. According to our most recent financial audit, 89 cents of every dollar that comes to CareHouse is devoted specifically toward serving children and families. Since we opened in 1996, we have conducted over 10,000 child forensic interviews, and 52 of those children resided in Lenox Township. In 2021, we conducted 727 forensic interviews, serving three children from Lenox, and last year in 2022, we did 704 interviews, and four of those children resided in Lenox Township. We do depend on the community to help us provide a voice for children and a safe place for them to be heard. We are very grateful for your partnership and your support in past years. This year, we're requesting $1,200 that would help to support services for two middle, low-to-middle income children and their families that would be residents of Lenox Township. Of course, we'd be happy for any amount we'd be able to provide. We invite the public to visit our website, www.mckarehouse.org, and to follow us on Facebook, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathleen Sheehan, and I am part of our seniors here at Lenox Township. On behalf of the senior center, I would like to request any funds from the CDVG to assist with new equipment as we are continuously growing. Thank you.
Alright, is there any public comment? Alright, motion will be entertained. Close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the community development block grant funds at 6:38. A second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Alright, discussion. Does anyone have any comments, questions? If there's no discussion, the motion will be entertained.
That's a lockdown figure. I take it 1,400. When?
I'm sorry, what?
That's a lockdown figure, 1,400. That's what we're getting.
Yes.
I'll throw this out there. I'll make a motion. We split to 1,400 evenly between our senior department and CareHouse.
So 700 to CareHouse and 700 to seniors?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Court Candell. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Alright, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board. It will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board requests or requests to add them prior to the meeting, in which event the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Item Number 9 below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by majority, roll call votes of those present and voting.
We have a total of $739,514.72 in invoices that we need approval for. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the orders and bills in the amount of $739,514.72. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hahn, seconded by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Hahn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Alright, new business. Item A, Fire Department Station 1 Exhaust Removal System Repair.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Since your last meeting had been brought to my attention by our DPW Director who oversees our buildings, that our exhaust removal system at the fire station number one had, basically was failing. It just wasn't running the way it should. This is a health-safety issue for our firefighters, and it was important that we got on this repair right away so that our firefighters aren't breathing diesel fuel when they're out checking out vehicles and otherwise working on the equipment. So I went ahead and approved the repair to move forward. There is only one vendor for this system. The systems are called a plime vent. It's a, we have been on the fire stations, the big yellow holes that hangs down from the ceiling and attaches to the exhaust on the fire truck to evacuate the diesel fumes. There's only one company that's approved to work on the system. It's a vendor in their issue kind of geographic area they work on, so it's not like we could go out and get bids for this work to be done. The total cost for that repair is $3,228.43. I approved the repair and move forward so they get the parts and get us on their schedule prior to the next meeting because of the nature of the health and safety concern that we had for our firefighters. I don't believe the work has been completed as yet. I have not spoke to Cam. He's been off for a little bit of time here, but I will check with him as soon as he's back. So I would ask the board to approve the repair in the amount of $3,228.43 to the diesel exhaust removal system with Hastings Air Energy Control.
Can you have this in your budget?
We have, we have, we not for this, you know, we didn't, we didn't have this particular item in the budget, but we have enough money in the budget to be able to cover this.
Well, I make a motion. We approve the estimate for this exhaust removal system at the fire department to the tune of $2,000, $3,228.43 with Hastings Air Energy Control.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Treasurer Hahn. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, Item B, Geothermo Chemical Treatment Service Proposal. Mr. Tronley is not here.
No, I have the information. I will present it since he is out. We normally contract with HV Burton Company, and I believe this is one of those things that's kind of what Jeff had just talked about, one vendor for glycol-based geothermal heat transfer system service renewal. This is a three-year option. They have a one-year option for 400, a three-year option for 1,150. In the past, we have opted for the three-year option, and that is what we're asking for again.
Just to throw something out there, I deal with HV Burton. We're unemployed and very big company. I don't have a problem personally. Like to make a motion for the three-year option with HV Burton for the geothermal heat transfer system, the chemical treatment.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by Court Candell. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
This is one of those things where there's no, there's not many companies out there that do that.
Item C, Nickel and Saff Asset Management Proposal with three dollars.
Good evening, board and everybody this evening, and hopefully all as well. This evening, I'm coming forward under the supervisor's office with a request for our insurance company that has been brought forward. They would like to do an assessment for us, and if you look at the documents that are in your packets, he offers to contract services for an asset management company to perform a physical inspection and survey of township-owned buildings, structures, and contents. The purpose of this effort is to develop contemporary replacement cost evaluations for all owned insured properties. Nickel and Saff, which is our current insurance carrier, would be paying 100% expense for this service. They've used HCA for many years and have been very happy with the product and the work results, the value of the contents within the building. At this point in time, the recommendation is to move forward with this, as we all know that the prices, the changes, and the structure amounts of items within the buildings have changed considerably. We've seen just in the last year, like our fire department, assets and acquirement items have skyrocketed. So those replacement costs are critical, and that would be across the board in all of our buildings. They would spend the time, come back to the board, and give that result and information which would give us a much more adjustable item for any insurance claims that we do have in the future. This is a recommended item to work forward with, so at this point in time, I'll bring it back to the board and allow them to receive any questions that they may have.
I did have a conversation with our township attorney prior to this meeting. He would like to discuss this further and recommends tableing it until the next meeting.
You kind of beat me to it. I was going to question Mr. Van Asson's opinion, but that, that sets it for me. I would have to agree with that.
I'd like to make a motion to table the Nickel and Saff Asset Management Proposal for 30 days. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Alright, Item B, Parks and Recreation Easter Event. Is she in?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. As Recreation Director, our, our committee has, what do you call it, come up with an Easter event this year for the kids. Be hosted April 1st, 2023, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM. Hopefully, the weather will be nice to us. Kids will be able to decorate egg cartons and be able to gather eggs filled with candy or toys. We'll also dedicate the new playground that has been put in place. There will be a raffle that will be free of charge. It won't cost anything. Would like to request assistance from DPW with set up and tear down, please. This event could be accomplished for $500, which would come out of the Recreation Fund. I would like to request approval from the board to embark on this Easter event for Lenox Township.
Make a motion to approve the Easter event, April 1st, 2023, from 1:00 to 3:30, presented by the Recreation Department. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hahn. May the Deputy Clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, Item E, Property Lease Agreement. Mr. Clifford?
Good evening, board. This evening, the supervisor's office is coming forward to you with a request and a recommendation for a renewal and addition to the lease that we've had in the past on the property surrounding the township hall, which is commonly known as the Future Park. We've sat down with a property, with a farmer that has currently been working with that. We have some finish-up items to do. We have come up with a new lease that's within your packet. At this point in time, based upon that information that has been processed through our attorney and legal counsel, it is recommended for us to move forward with that. The township will receive a phenomenal amount of rent for that property. That lease is perpetually renewed annually every year, starting January 1st, and then with proper notices, we start to work forward on the development of the park process. Those notifications will be given to the farmer that is currently processing that property. There's been some questions concerning some items that were outstanding that has also been added to the lease for cleanup from the COVID time, if you will. Those items have been put together. It's been worked through once again, legal. We've had our DPW involved, so we have coordination, working with waste management and removing some of those items or accepting some of those items. But at this point in time, it is being requested that we move forward with that lease, both the property, Lenox Township, of course, you guys understand that, and the person leasing the property for farming is also available for any questions.
I heard you say that it was in our packet. I have a copy of the lease agreement.
And I think this also needs to go back to legal with the new property that we purchased in discussion with Mr. Asper.
There's nothing in our packet.
Okay, and I apologize because there was some stuff sent, and there were some adjustments done. So I thought we had moved forward with this, that we had sent the copies forward, but I apologize. The lease is, in fact, the same items. We can hold for 30 days on this. We don't have a problem with that based upon the weather conditions, and you'll be able to see the numbers within that and the items on the listing that has to be corrected as we move forward. This, if you do, in fact, accept this, it will become retroactive as of January 1st.
I believe it probably best to table this until the last meeting.
I would agree. I'd like to make a motion to table because I'd like to see the lease before we sign in.
I'll sign you with that. I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, seconded by the Chair. May the Deputy Clerk call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahn?
Aye.
Alrighty, Item F, 2023 Limestone Program.
Alright, this evening, you have information. Annually, we come forward with the request from McComb County Department of Roads. This year, they have changed the program slightly. We have been requested from them to participate. The request and the recommendation is for us to, in fact, participate. They are going out for new bids in March, so the numbers will change. But we are requesting at this point in time to move forward so that we can participate, have the recommendation of the roads that is overseen and decided by them now. They make the final decision. But we are recommending that we do move forward with the limestone project as we have done in the past years, up to 30,000, not to exceed that number. We do know that there's been an increase. We were notified, and that is part of the rebidding as of March. They will put that bid out, but we will not have time to have that interaction and involvement to come back to the board, so that's why we're limiting the amount to up to 30,000. The past year, last year, I believe our price was 28,000, 25,320 for the three miles of participation, in which we did Place Road, 27 Mile Road, and I think that was it because of the, that was the maximum, three miles. So we see that increase coming forward. That's why we're asking to go ahead and move forward with the agreement, but not to exceed 30,000.
Wasn't it, I mean, this, they changed it, you said, Mark. I mean, I know in the past, it was decided by...
You're correct.
It was, if I'm wrong, it's him and our DPW Director.
It was technically decided by the board, what roads we would do.
It was recommended by them.
They were reviewed by those two guys depending on, we never decided this early because of the fact that we're still going to have frost weather coming out of the ground, and which, which way did it adversely affect our roads. We made that call, but now you're saying that the Road Commission took that responsibility away from us.
So let me clarify that, Mr. Clifford. They're requesting if we're going to participate, which that's, yes, I believe the board will participate. The final statement in their email notification to us was, once you supply the roads that you consider to be an issue, our maintenance supervisors will review those roads and make a final determination as we own the roads.
But that, yeah, that...
That was their clarity.
That own the roads statement before, and they always laid that on us, but we always had a heavy say in what, what was going to be done, but if they took it from us, there's not going to be...
There's not much, right.
Request all public to direct calls to the Road Commission yet, but anyway.
But we do, we do have a listing.
I see a story.
We do, we do have a listing, trustee Clifford, from Sir Met, from CAM. We have recommendations. Those are, in fact, going to go back to McComb County.
Okay.
We, we are sending those recommendations, but I'm just trying to make sure you understand and clarify that.
No, I do. I.
The county was real clear about that statement.
Which recommendations are we sending? I've seen two.
I believe that will probably be brought up during the March board meeting.
Okay.
It's April third.
Still, yeah, yeah, time. So it was.
So they just need to know now whether or not we're participating.
Correct. Are we participating? Hopefully the board says yes, and the recommendation is that we move, we spend not more than thirty thousand at that, at CAM.
And that's thirty thousand per mile, so it would be ninety thousand total.
No, 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 no.
Don't.
No, no, that's thirty thousand.
Okay.
Correct. That's, and it's, it'll be clarified. It's not per mile. Trustee Gurley's right. Last year, we spent twenty-five.
I just got it mixed up with the, um.
Oh, the slum brine?
The, yeah.
The brine.
Brine that they put on the roads. We paid per mile for that.
So they're, and I'm glad you mentioned that, trustee Gurley, Mark. Candell, just clarification. They also add brine into the limestone now while they're doing that. So those three miles that we're doing should be removed off of our brine application pricing. It's not a guarantee, but just putting it out there, the information.
It was quite dust beyond the ones they did.
That's right.
Everything was white in my yard for weeks.
So with that, I'm just requesting recommendation for us to participate, and I'll have the board give us that allowance to move forward, and those streets and so on will be forwarded after the March meeting.
I will make a recommendation that Lennox Township participate.
Motion, I'm sorry.
What did I say?
You said recommendation.
I said recommendation, sorry. I apologize.
I would like to make a motion that Lennox Township participate in the 2023 Limestone Program, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahnell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item G, Senior Center Community, Senator Can, drawing requests for bids, Mr. Gray.
Good evening, once again, board. This evening in the packet, I know that one you do have, is a request of particip, or allowing the supervisor's office to put up and go out for bid, uh, for CAD drawing items and services pertaining to the Lennox Township Community and Senior Center. With us moving forward on that project, we need to have the, uh, senior center put together so that we have the proper drawings for the community involvement. Uh, this would allow us to do interior, exterior, and also allow us to make sure the engineering standards are correct, so that when we put this finally together, we'll have an actual document that can go to the people that are going to be bidding on the interior, knowing exactly what they have to do. We have bids in process already for the roof to be replaced and the HVAC. This is completely for the interior, exterior design, along with all of the electrical requirements that are part of that building that come up to cook. This is a request to put it up for bid, and allow those folks, once the specs are done, they can put in their request or participation RFQ.
Putting these bids is strictly going out to architects, right?
That is correct. This is strictly a.
This is at interested parties. I didn't, I, uh, but yeah, I, I know, we're sitting, I'm sure Sir Met has a architect on staff, but, um, yeah, okay.
We're also looking to have, hopefully, some facilities that might have some community participation with a reduction in costs, seeing it as a community center and senior center. So we're hoping that, you know, someone might be able to move forwards, but, you know, these things are not cheap. That is the problem. We're hoping that they consider us for that and participate in it.
I will make a motion to approve the request for bids to go out for CAD drawings and services pertaining to the Lennox Township Senior Center Community Center. Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnell, seconded by clerk Candell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item H, Border Review Alternative Plan, Mr. Gray.
Evening, board. Moving forward, this evening, the supervisor's office is coming forward, requesting in your packet, you'll see a nomination for Mr. Robert Bemersch for the current vacancy of the Border Review. As an alternate member, Mr. Bemersch is a thirty-two-year resident in Lennox Township and believes he can be a great asset to the Border Review of the Township. Based upon his background and information that's attached within, you'll see that Mr. Bemersch is a certified realtor, and that is a key item for us on the Border Reviews. With that, the supervisor's office is recommending to the board that Mr. Bemersch be appointed to the vacant position on the Border Review as the alternate member, with a term expiring as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I'm sorry. I, excuse me, I was overrating something, sorry. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I will make a motion to authorize the appointment of Robert Bemersch as an alternate to the Border Review for a term of two years expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnell, seconded by trustee Gurley. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item I, Building Department Inspector Contract Approvals, Mr. Gray.
Good evening. Oh, I have it in the packet. I mean, I'm going long. I might as well pitch the rest of it so you guys can catch it.
Pitch it to me.
There we go. All right. Good evening. This evening, we're requesting from the Building Department, the inspector contract approvals. This evening, the board has several of them within the packet. Uh, we're seeking approval from the board to state Lennox Township's current contracted backup inspector, Brian Van Slumbrink, to the primary mechanical and plumbing inspector position. I'm also seeking approval of Joe Downs for the contracted medical and plumbing backup inspector, and Rich Doran for the contracted electrical backup inspector has presented, presented this for Ms. Amy Flood as she is out of state. There are copies of the inspector agreements and exhibit A agreements, which portrays the inspector's compensation. Requesting that we move forward with, we can move forward, I believe, with each one in the.
I have signed contracts from all three of them, but we need to make separate motions.
So I'm requesting a. Want to request it. Coming forward for you to consider a signed contract for inspector Brian Van Slumbrink as the primary mechanical and plumbing inspector.
I'll make a motion that we approve Brian Van Slumbrink as the primary mechanical plumbing inspector. He's currently acting as our backup. Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, seconded by treasurer Hahnell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right. Supervisor's office is requesting that we consider and move forward with the approval of Joe Downs for the contracted medical, mechanical and plumbing backup inspector. This is also in your packet.
I make a motion that we approve Joe, Joe Downs for the contracted medical and plumbing backup inspector.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by clerk Candell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Supervisor's office is coming forward with item number three after this, or requesting Rich Doran be approved under the contracted electrical backup inspector as presented with the contracts in your hands.
A motion to approve Rich Doran for the contracted electrical backup inspector.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnell, seconded by trustee Gurley. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Now, item J, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendment.
I am requesting that a budget amendment be made for, um, adding forty thousand dollars to developer funded escrow and taking that forty thousand dollars out of engineering fees. These are both in the same cost center. It's just a matter of making accounts correct. The second one is to add twenty thousand dollars to the zoning coordinator and removing that twenty-four, twenty thousand dollars from planner fees. The third item would be to add twenty thousand dollars to election wages, and that money would come out of capital outlay.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two budget amendments as presented by the clerk Candell. Forty thousand dollars added to the developer fund escrow, taken from the engineering funds or fees, and twenty thousand added to the zoning coordinator, taken from the planner fees, and twenty thousand added to the election wages, taken from capital outlay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by treasurer Hahnell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item K, Medical Insurance Renewal, please, court.
Kathy and I both spoke with, uh, Dennis Doyle from the Ascend Group regarding the renewal of our medical insurance. We looked at two different Blue Cross policies and one H, uh, half PPO, um, plan. After speaking with several employees regarding the plans, it became very obvious to us that employees would prefer to stay with the current plan as opposed to changing to half due to the availability of their doctors on the new plan. Blue Cross is showing an increase of about nine percent this year, which means overall, there's been a twenty percent increase in the past two years. After review of employee comments and policy, and the policies presented, we would like to recommend that we continue with Blue Cross Blue Shield on the current policy.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of the employee medical insurance Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by clerk Candell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Item L, Clerk's Administrative Assistant Employment Proposal, may the clerk?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Wendy Costa for all of her years of service to the township. Um, she decided she was retiring. We, um, regretfully accepted her resignation. So we went on a venture to find a new assistant, and after about twelve resumes and five interviews, um, it was decided that we would hire Ally Lawson. She is a township resident who is currently seeking a financial degree from Walsh. Um, she has worked in finance before, and I feel that she's a great, would be a great fit for the township. So I would like to recommend that we hire Ally Lawson. I will make a motion to approve the hiring of Ally Lawson as recommended by, uh, Luanne Candell.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnell, seconded by trustee Gurley. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item M, May, May meeting day modification, may the clerk?
We had talked about before at another meeting because of the schedule of elections and our board meeting normally happening the night before an election, that the next time we had an election, we would change our meeting date to hopefully make things easier from the election standpoint. We do have an election on May second. Our mayor of schools has a couple bond issues. They're putting on a ballot. Therefore, it's the clerk's office request to change the date of the May second, twenty twenty-third meeting, I think it was May first, to May eighth, at the regular start time of six thirty.
May eighth, so Monday?
No, I asked May eighth because the Monday, May first was the.
A second date on yours.
So it's going from May first to the eighth?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we change the date of our board meeting from May first, twenty twenty-three, to May eighth, twenty twenty-three, due to the election for the mayor of school.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by trustee Clifford. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnell?
Aye.
All right. Item N, July third, office hours and compensation.
No, that'd be, yeah, treasurer. Well, since July, uh, fourth is on a Tuesday, I would like to see the offices closed on July third, just to give us an extra long weekend. It doesn't really make a lot of sense to be here Monday off Tuesday, be back Wednesday. So I'd like to see the offices closed on the third and also have the, um, employees be paid for that day.
The third and the fourth?
Well, they're getting paid for the fourth.
They get paid for the fourth anyway, so that'd be just a little perk.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Hahnell, seconded by trustee Clifford. May the deputy clerk please, please call the roll.
Hahnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right. Item O, Food Truck Oratorium. So at this time, we are requesting that we extend the oratorium to the next board meeting. Uh, you received a copy of the draft, draft ordinance, uh, from Mr. Addis. Uh, I don't believe it's the final copy as of yet.
Uh, no, it's not a final copy. Um, I just think that you people should look at it. I think it's a moderation of a lot of ones I've looked at, uh, but you gotta decide how you want to spread the times. If you want to make them a year, a month, a day, or all three, uh, and what your fees are going to be. The fees are changeable at any board meeting, uh, but an idea of what they're going to be. But I think you'll find that, uh, that's all, uh, in line with Michigan law right now, and it's, it's.
But I think you'll find that that's all in line with Michigan law right now, and it's available. But give it some thought during the meeting again, or any suggestions I'll accept them, it will be a month later.
I'll make a motion that we extend the food truck moratorium until the March board meeting to give us time to review the food truck ordinance.
I second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Trustee Clifford, may the Deputy Clerk please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye. Item P, fire department grant proposal, may the Clerk?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, tonight I come before you to explain situations that come up since really shortly after our last meeting. I had mentioned to the board, to board members at different times this year, that it was our intent at the fire department to try to apply for what's called Assistance to Firefighter Grant when it came up this year for the purpose of purchasing a new fire truck for our department. We're looking at the possible purchase of a smaller size aerial-type fire truck that we'd be able to use for places like our new Beaumont, the prison that has a lot of multi-story buildings, as well as even things that might involve our ITC towers that go throughout our community. The AFG grant, as it's called, has been around for a number of years. I've seen it come and go year in, year out. The EMS has actually applied and used it from time to time. In most years, there is about a two-to-three-month period in which to complete the grant document. This year, for reasons that we haven't received an explanation for, the grant opened for submission on January 9th and closed on February, or will close on February 10th, which is this Friday. That gave us, Lennox Township working a four-day work week and one federal holiday, seventeen days, to complete probably the single most complicated grant I have ever seen. Our fire chief, Marty Hartway, did a phenomenal job of pulling together a lot of information that was required for the grant. I did my best to help him, and part of the grant's process is also to get regional partners, both business, partners, elected officials, and other communities to join you in the grant from the purpose of support. So in that seventeen days, Marty pulled together, Chief Hartway pulled together all of the information that we needed. I was able to secure letters from our prison, ITC Beaumont, our US Senator, our US Representative, and the neighboring communities of both great Chesterfield Township. But we still weren't getting there. We still needed a little more help. There's a gentleman who is very well-regarded in this area. He's written a number of successful grants. His name is Kerry Thompson. We met with Kerry. He was available to provide us the support we need to get this grant completed by the 10th, which again, this is Friday. We're not there yet, but I think we're going to make the deadline with his assistance. But his cost is two thousand dollars. I went ahead and approved that amount of money, believing that it was in the best interest of the township and in the limited timeframe that we had to go, and I'm asking for the board to approve that expenditure. We do have money within the fire department budget that will cover the cost of this. And this is a competitive grant. There are never any guarantees. But certainly, if we were to receive it, we could end up purchasing for the township a fire truck that will probably come right near two million dollars.
How much does the grant cost?
The grant, we're requesting, we're requesting the two million, we're requesting two million dollars in the grant to cover the entire cost of the vehicle. Unlike this, unlike many grant writers, like I say, Kerry's actually a firefighter, I believe, in Royal Oak. He's used extensively in southeast Michigan for this purpose. But like, unlike a lot of grant writers, he does not take a percentage of what you receive in the grant. He has a flat fee of two thousand dollars, which also made it nice because you're not losing a portion of your grant to your grant writer by having him assist you with this.
Currently, anything aerial is five mutual aid, right?
Right. Today, anything, we would need, anytime we'd need an elevated, elevated ladder like that would be a mutual aid to call. Chesterfield does have a unit, Baltimore has a unit currently. And Richmond further north, yes.
I believe Chesterfield is discussing southbound aerials.
They have two, and when we met with them to discuss, we had a meeting with their public safety director, their supervisor, and their fire chief to discuss them supporting our grant. They're not applying this year. They felt like there wasn't enough time. They sort of benefit us, and some communities just didn't feel there was time to apply this year. I don't want to get optimistic, but I'm hopeful that might benefit us. But their indication at that meeting was that I think they're going to get rid of one of the two vehicles. They have two current aerial trucks, one kind of towards the south part of their community and one towards the north part of their community. I think they're going to get rid of one of them, or that is their thought. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think that's where they were headed.
I will make a motion that we approve the expenditures of two thousand dollars for the fire department grant proposal. Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hallow, may the Deputy Clerk please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Thank you so very much. Again, I just can't say enough good about him at any time, but our fire chief really went above and beyond the call in helping to bring this together, and I just couldn't be prouder of his work on this, on this particular...
Are you guys going to keep track of what's going on with this secondary vehicle?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll certainly know because from a countywide mutual aid standpoint, each department can use its neighboring department's vehicles if we need to, so they would report that out to not just us, but to the county. Just from a timeframe on this, it might just be worth mentioning to the board so they know and those that might be listening and interested in this. This grant, although we have, like I said, a very short window to get it applied for, generally, you don't hear anything about these grants for about ten months. They're through the Department of Homeland Security, and it just doesn't work. The process does not work fast. So hopefully, you know, a little before this time next year, we may know whether we were successful in receiving it or not. Thank you.
All right, public comment. Right, call from board. All right, adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:28. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallow, seconded by Trustee Gurley. Call in favor.
Aye.
You are adjourned.